No pressure.
We go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we're standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with the love of our fathers and with the justice of our home.
Go American. I grant it, we had a blast in there, those bullets. And you're up.
She does have that first.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have the financials for the week in front of you. We have several appropriation transfer requests, one from the general fund contingency to Commonwealth for new salaries for the new magistrate from March of December, appropriation transfer request for engineers and job and family services for year end salaries appropriations. We have two supplemental appropriation requests, one for job and family services, child support admin for contract services, and another for the juvenile courts care and custody fund for salaries for year end. We have one cash transfer from the general fund for community development for the fourth quarter payroll funding. We have a travel encumbrance for job and family services and for water resources. We have three vouchers of note this week, a payment of $30,853 to statewide Ford for the vehicle for the dog warden, a payment of $31,685 to Huffman Equipment for rental for engineers, road and building fund. That was for channel erosion on Winter Green Drive at Ravenna Road. They had to have Huffman come in and put some large boulders in to work on the channel erosion there. And a payment of $34,376.64 to Hall Public Safety, that is for the sheriff's office for the outfitting of the six vehicles that were bought earlier this year. We have one revenue certification for the Commonwealth Court. Any questions?
Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 16-152, itemizing the financials for the meeting of November 15, 2016.
Make that motion again.
Ms. Reer?
Aye.
Ms. Plaidball?
Aye.
Thank you.
If somebody could hold a walk lead and then see if he's okay.
Commissioner's Office will report on the items approved November 10th and November 14th, 2016 by the county administrator authorized by Resolution 16-097, under the directions and supervision of the county commissioners. It was amended and approved July 12th, 2016 pursuant to ORC 305.30.
Okay. On November 10th, I accepted the resignation of Gerald Hawkins, a part-time transit driver to be effective November 9th, 2016. And November 14th, I approved or signed off on two reimbursement requests for the airport authority. Reimbursement number two, FAA Project 3-39-054-18-2015, revolve a terminal apron phase two of two in the amount of $223,694.66, which was $201,325 of FAA money and $22,369.66 of local county match. Second one was reimbursement number two, FAA Project 3-39-054-019-2016, construct taxi lanes, crack seal runway designed only for airfield lighting system and Pappy for runway 29 in the amount of $62,310.80, of which $56,080 of FAA and $6,230.80 was the local county match.
You already read it. I'll make the motion.
No, there's nothing to make the motion.
No, I'm not made, you're right, you're right.
That's right.
You got no.
Good morning.
Floyd, how are you this morning?
Good morning. This morning I'm here because we had a local revolving loan fund client finishes term on his mortgage, so we're satisfying that mortgage and releasing him from loan obligations.
Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute a satisfaction mortgage for 15332 Old State Road Properties LLC located at 15332 South State Avenue, Middlefield, Ohio, as the local revolving loan fund loan in the amount of $75,000 has been satisfied.
Make the motion. Second.
Ms. Reer?
Aye.
Ms. Plaidball?
I have a question. Kelly, whoever else, the last week, we sent a number back for clarification of, through Joni. Do you know anything about what?
Yes, we did get the approval from Laura. She emailed Joni yesterday stating that those were the correct documents to use to release those mortgages. And I believe Joni was going to call Dave after session today just to go through that to see when she can get those back on session.
Okay, yeah, because I just, you know, if you just got word yesterday, it's not going to make our agenda today.
Exactly. So it'll probably be on the agenda next Tuesday if Joni tells us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, have a good day.
Hi, good morning, guys. So, for purposes of four items, four, five, and six, there are three different lease amendments that we have so far executed for the three different capital oriented projects that we've had over the past year. The one being for sort of air conditioners in our computer room, which needed, which were failed and which we purchased and put back in there, the keyless entry system, and then the secure reception area security upgrade. So we pay you back over time, over the depreciation schedule for those items, and so I just wanted to add that to our current lease that we have with you to reflect that we are paying you back those funds.
Are we going to do them together individually?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest we do them together.
Okay. This is four, five, and six. The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve and execute the second addendum to lease agreement for reimbursement for capital expenditure, computer room AC system between the County Board of Commissioners and County Job and Family Services to establish a 60-month depreciation schedule in accordance with Section 5 of the lease agreement for reimbursement of a capital of a computer room AC system in the amount of $11,500. Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve and execute the third addendum to the lease agreement reimbursement for capital expenditure, keyless entry security system between the County Board of Commissioners and County Job and Family Services to establish a 36-month depreciation schedule in accordance with Section 5 of the lease agreement for reimbursement of a keyless entry security system in the amount of $19,365. Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve and execute the fourth addendum to the lease agreement reimbursement for capital expenditure, reception area security upgrade between the County Board of Commissioners and County Job and Family Services to establish a 23-year depreciation schedule in accordance with Section 5 of the lease agreement for reimbursement of a reception area security upgrade in the amount of $35,660.
I'll make those motions.
Second. Ms. Reer?
Aye.
Ms. Plaidball?
Aye.
Ms. Plaidball?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Have a nice day.
Good morning, Jack. How are you?
Good.
We are looking to ask your permission to hire Richard DeFrancesco, a part-time driver. Richard will be replacing the gentleman that I just mentioned, Gerald Hawkins. I think that's going to come up in this vision. Gerald actually replaced my personal office five years recently, a few months ago, so with your permission, we'd like to hire DeFrancesco.
Transit Department is requesting the board approve hiring Richard DeFrancesco to the position of part-time transit driver of 2210-1 to be effective November 21st, 2016 at the rate of $13.57 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon successful completion of required pre-employment conditions.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Ms. Reer?
Aye.
Ms. Plaidball?
Hey, Jack, let me ask you a question. You've been with the transit for quite a number of years. Do you, um, 26?
Who's come?
Do you, in the amount of time that you've been there, have you seen it where if you have full-time employee, your retainment is a little bit better?
Oh, definitely, definitely. And we've been reluctant to, or Mike has been, to fill a couple of full-time positions because of the, you know, what we're all kids financially to try and save. But it definitely helps us.
But I guess, you know, there's a cost of going back and forth, of a lot of the interview processes taking time out of your day and everybody else's to do this consistency and employment consistency in the route, the training costs that go into it, there's a lot of, there's a lot of dollars behind it. People, you know, don't necessarily see but are fixed in there. You know, I don't know, I mean, maybe this isn't the right time, and I'll talk to Mike about it, but it just, I had this discussion with Dave about 10 minutes ago, so, you know, it's just, it's concerning to me a little bit because I think that we need to look at, what do we do to maybe look at inviting a bullet and putting another full-time or something on that's going to be there for, to cover some of this stuff? And somebody that, at the end of the day, you're not waking up in the morning saying, now, how do we cover this route because such and such called off, or such and such is sick, or such and such is resigning? It's, I mean, we went through this with Water Resources about three or four years ago, Jerry? Was it? And it was a nightmare. I mean, an absolute nightmare because you're tasking everybody else to fill in for what these people are doing with the turnover, and I just, I think we're money ahead sometimes by committing to having some dedicated full-time people.
I would agree.
You know, and I think we really need to look at this because...
Yeah, I think, I think what's weighing on Mike's mind is ODOT has really been kind of going back and forth under funding. Mike doesn't feel, you know, they don't create an environment, you correct me if I'm wrong, they don't create an environment where the transit management group really feels confident, yeah, we're going to get this much money and this one's going to come in. They're changing constantly. It's based on two years ago, and the current spending and the current funding, it's all, it's a handful.
Well, there's two other dynamics that are coming into play here with the new administration. We don't know where transit dollars are going to go, and they're going to be investing money in infrastructure. And NOAACA, as our master planning region, is talking about modifying or trying to modify how transit's handled on a regional basis, which means that they would want to suck dollars out of our economy, possibly for Cleveland's shortfall falls, but, you know, Ralph brings up an interesting, good idea, so.
So, what is with NOAACA? Do you guys, is there any availability of funds for you guys through NOAACA or no?
To a point, there might be some for the unmet needs because we are part of a little slice of Jogga, is that urban area that there are unmet needs. Typically, they haven't been pursued.
Okay. So what would we need to do to pursue that? Like, is it something that we would need to request some?
Rassle with RTA and Lake County.
There is another, and I'm bringing this up, I wasn't going to bring this up until it was more big, but I reached out to the new Republican county commissioners in Lake County yesterday. We do have an opportunity to lead NOAACA. It required commissioner support from Lake County. We might have with the new regime, new support for that. I've already done the cost model that ODOT has endorsed, and so if that were to, it's a long shot granted, but if that were to unfold, we wouldn't have to negotiate with NOAACA, we would just be working out a deal with Lake County in terms of how that would all work, and so it could be an interesting...
Yeah, so all that federal money goes through NOAACA for the urban systems, for the rural, it's administered through ODOT, so we don't have much participation anymore in, you know, the meetings and so on. But I would agree, anything to, you know, boost one or two positions to, you know, full-time would be, if we could swing it, that would be great, yes. And we do our best in the interview process to ask all the questions and have people ask us everything and explain to people through the job, and it's like, wow, this is more than I thought it would be.
Yeah. Do you have part-timers that would be willing to go full-time?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, so it's not like we would have somebody, we'd have to hire somebody new, we could just take some folks that are now part-time, who already have experience and knowledge.
We have another gentleman that's, he's been talking retirement, he's full-time now, so absolutely two or three that would definitely go.
So let me ask you, how?
We've got a, our HR person. Go ahead, Lynda, you want to?
I just wanted to add, because I had a lengthy discussion with Joanne last week about this same issue, about what we can do to help with the turnover. And one point that she made was that they typically have a block of rides they give in the morning and a block of rides they give later in the day with a couple hours in between. And what she expressed was, I don't want to pay somebody to sit around. I understand that, and then I said, well, can we find other things? And Jack, you can speak to this, can we find other things for them to do during the sit-around time? Maybe they can clean the bus. I mean, I'm just spitballing here, but that was what she expressed, was her reason for not wanting or being able to give a person an eight-hour day because typically in the middle of the day, there aren't as many rides requested. And I don't know, Jack, if you see it the same way or not, but that was what she said.
Well, right now, we're covering some runs that go all day long. I did two of them that are covered by part-timers, so those we've never filled, yes, that opened up for retirement and et cetera.
Jack, let me ask you, maybe, this isn't the right time, maybe I need, you know, need to talk to Mike, but it just, you know, just you're seasoned and you've been there a long time, but as far as our marketing strategy to getting more people to use that, our most aggressive marketing strategy is what right now?
We're out there. Marketing, right now, we're denying typically 120 plus or minus trips per month because of those peak times, early morning and afternoon, so, you know, sometimes we're afraid to market because you're going to have, turn people down, we can't keep up the demand.
But, and isn't, I mean, confirm this, and I've had multiple conversations with Mike about this, because of, you know, if you look at the average ridership, it's one person per trip, and you've got a 12-passenger bus, that gets to be a challenge because you're seeing a lot of empty buses driving around. Now, they're not all empty, because in the morning, you've got full buses, in the evening, you've got full buses, there are certain times of the day where you've got, part of the challenge that Mike has conveyed to me is that the ODOT rules create a bit of a barrier, and we've got, or a problem, because you've got people who want to schedule rides, you know, the Amish who do housekeeping, or whoever, they want to schedule rides from point A to point B, but it's hard to get a fixed time from point A to point B because you're required by law to pick people up along the way, which creates, which creates a problem from a timing perspective, so there's some constraints in the system because of the program we're under with ODOT that create inflexibility or inadapability in a system which could be a lot more efficient if we could kind of set our own rules, so to speak. Maybe there's a way to play their game differently, maybe not taking the particular grant dollars that we're taking. We take a different set of grant dollars, and Mike and I have talked about that, there's different grants available. We've not, you know, done an Uber-like thing yet because we have to play by a different set of rules, and we haven't decided whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. But maybe this is the time too to talk about the various games that are, you know, that you play with these grant dollars, maybe there's a different approach. You know, I'm going around talking to businesses right now, and without exception, so far, the top three challenges that businesses have told me about is, in that list, is finding good people who work eight hours and show up not drunk. And in that list are people that need transportation. I mean, they're in a, I won't say a poverty situation, but they're a low-income situation, they need to get ready to that in some way, shape, or form, but to get ready to that, they need a ride to get to work. And so the employers, we've got a bunch of employers that are probably hiring them, transportation is an issue, and transit might be able to help in that.
Absolutely, there are a lot of strings attached to those federal dollars that we ask for. If we have local funding, there would be, it would open up a lot of other things that we could do differently. And there are several ways to do that.
You know, we've got Amish guys that's in some of our boards, this is something I was going to bring up at one point in time, like the planning commission, for example, we've got the Amish guy sitting there, he has a hard time getting back and forth because he's got to pay 35 bucks or 40 bucks to get to the meeting, and, you know, he can take a transit bus and say, we can't because of hours or whatever it takes.
It's first come, first served, which we share with everybody, so if we're going that way and we can push out a bus, we're tasked with it. But if we got local participation, I'm sure we could, you know, the employers, what have you, we'd do things differently. There's some outside forces that are at work right now. Recently, they had a transportation meetings and talks with the other, you know, the other people that are coming in to transport people. There's some religious organizations and so on that have buses running people around that don't have the same, they don't have to play by the same rules. Our Lady of Wayside, there's a couple others, I saw them, I can't remember the names, but I know the Wayside buses, I see them around now. And then when you talk to some of the agencies or departments in the county, because I talked to Mike about this, they're anti-Jogga transit, and some of that may be based on historical stuff, according to Mike. Yeah, he said, and he says, well, that's what he told me, he says, did you ever call me? Did I ever turn you down for a ride? Have you been turned down for, oh, no, in the past, we'd call them and we couldn't get a ride. And so there's a wrinkle. What's that?
We need specifics, yeah.
Right, there's a wrinkle there that is like innuendo and rumor and what's fact. I, it's a problem, but then the funding is, we have to do this or we have to do that. It's not, it's not unique. And then when people complain about empty buses, I lived that for quite a while. I saw a school bus go by and there were no kids on it. Yeah, it was headed back to the bus garage. Yeah. They picked up all the kids in the morning, and then they dropped them off at the school, and now they're looking, somebody's looking at the bus going back to park going, there's nobody on those buses. They all have the same thing. That's, now, how many people ride your bus back, except the driver, back to the yard? Or to the next pickup. We just dropped somebody off. We dropped several people off. I know, when you hear that argument, sometimes you just shake your head and go, are you supposed to kidnap somebody, put them on the bus so you got a rider, or what? That's it, inflatables. Instead of airbags, you just load somebody up in the seat. So with the right local support, there are things we could do differently.
But, I mean, to Ralph's question, if, and baking on what Linda had said in terms of, you know, if you tend to do part-time people because you've got this gap of time in there, and maybe you don't want to pay for that gap of time, but if it makes sense business-wise, and then leave it to you, Mike, and whoever to say, make that call, if a full-time person makes more sense because you've got stability, you've got whatever, then it's up to you guys to kind of bring the case to us, or if Ralph wants to take the time, we'll have to talk to Mike. I think that's probably a good thing to do. I mean, we always, we need to always be questioning these kinds of things, make sure we're improving and doing a smart thing. Anything else?
Let's schedule something with you and Mike, just to come down and introduce some ideas around, see what, see some thoughts or direction that you guys can give me and to be able to at least have some ideas in the mix.
All right, that'd be great.
You guys purchased a smaller van, right?
Yes.
How's that working?
Oh, pretty good. We've been using it almost daily. If they have a small run where there's going to be only one or two people at a time, it is accessible, but it'd be a real challenge to get a mobility device in because of the limited ramp and the working space, but we're on a tight time.
But it makes sense, I mean, what do you think of the, not to extend this conversation, I apologize, this is an interesting conversation to me because I, this, the whole transit department has been a conundrum, but what do you think of a more Uber-like model, based on your experience? You've got a lot of experience.
Yeah, I could give you an answer right now. I'm not really familiar with how Uber operates.
But it's basically a taxi.
Taxi.
It's a county-run taxi service.
I know, we take same-day calls. If we get a call, we have something available, we go.
But the difference being, you got a 12-passenger vehicle, now you're constrained because the Ohio strings attached say, you've got to take somebody from here to here, if there's anybody along the way in your schedule, you have to pick them up on the way. It's first come, first served, and you're obligated to stop and pick people up in the route if they ask to go for a ride. In a county-based taxi or an Uber service, it's point A to point B. One client, they want to go from point A to point B, you send somebody out to pick them up and take them from point A to point B. And they have Uber technically as a contractor service, so, you know, they provide their own vehicle. Now, maybe what the county does is provide vouchers for that situation.
I feel too that, you know, and I brought this up, I brought this up in the past, and I can never really get a definitive answer of what our abilities are to be able to legally mandate a background system or like, to be able to, not a background system, but to issue an actual taxi permit in the county, like Kiawaga has their own taxi permits?
Well, the cities do. The cities, the county, there's nothing in Ohio law to allow a county to regulate, that's...
You know, but my biggest concern has always been is, you know, is, and we're unique in Jogga with our Amish population that is always in need of transportation services, and they've got dirtballs picking them up, you know, pedophiles and, you know, drug dealers and every, every other, every other, you know, you know, freak of nature that is picking these people up, and criminals, you know, that are, that are, that are basically, you know, taking advantage of the Amish, and on top of that, putting them at risk. And I hate to say it, but it's just, the reality is, is that, you know, innocently enough, these, a lot of that culture trusts people, and they're letting their daughters get transported to wherever to go and clean somebody's house with the guy that probably should be in jail. And I'm not saying that for all of them, but I'm just telling you based on experience of knowing the clientele that I have on my business side of things, of knowing some of the drivers and some of the incidences and everything else, we've got a clientele out there that I feel that we've got a duty to protect. And we've got a transit department that does exactly that, drives from point A to point B, and I feel like my hands are handcuffed here because we, by whatever regulation, sometimes can't offer a service to be able to make sense and protect, you know, some people from harm. And I just, I think that Jogga County is like the absolute perfect scenario to be enabled to have an aggressive, I don't know if you would say taxi service or whatever it is, but there's just, there's a huge need. And, you know, you look at that, you know, they're a huge working class of people, and Monday through Friday, they're working Saturday as their day of commerce or going here to go in there, and we're closed, you know, we're closed. So it's like, I'm not trying to open up a whole new can of worms, I'm just saying this is I have my personal feelings on this, and what I, if, if, if we really look at running government like a business and making smart business decisions, I would never be closed on a Saturday when people are looking for places to go. And I'm not the director there, I don't necessarily have, I'm, you know, not the state of Ohio that's giving funds or whatever, but I think that there's a point in time that we've got to look at other options, and we've got to look at some things that maybe we can do to benefit a lot of the other people, because I know this, there's, there's companies that, you know, say that it's hard for them sometimes to, it's not hard for them to get employees to, that are qualified employees sometimes, but there's always a transportation hiccup, you know? And we've got a lot of the factories, and I hear this like in Middlefield many times, there's, there's, there's factories there that have, you know, Amish population that's working there, but sometimes they're relying on transportation to get there that is not necessarily your transportation, but it's just calling John Smith Taxi and, you know, and he ended up able to go to Warren to go... And he ended up able to go to Warren to go and sell some heroin, so making a little bit more than driving this guy around. So he took that run instead of picking up the guy to drive him out, you know, to a factory. And, and, and he's late and, and there's a lot of challenges, whereas I've said this many times, with, with the limited amount of transportation that these people have. You know, having a specific route system there of being able to, to, to pick up at, you know, a couple of key places to be able to go into the communities there, pick up, drop them off at the factories or wherever these people are working at. And, and, and having some kind of an organized run and work with the business community to say, we wanna be part of your success and your success is part of the entire county's success. What could we do to be an integral part of this? And I, I just think that it, it's, it's hard for me because I look at the resource that we have there of the dollars that, I look at it in the private side of it, for, for a private company to put. That kind of investment together of having a facility, having buses, having people, having benefits, having everything that goes along with it, we have it. And, and, and I think that it's like, why we're not getting more aggressive with it is just, I, it's, it's hard and I guess, you know, we gotta talk about these regulations to make it a little bit easier to possibly look at another way to do things. We just really have to look at the numbers and say, what makes sense? You know, and maybe have, have a, a group thing with potentially some of the other businesses out there too, to say, we need the community support to say, we're gonna do this.
That's what it'll take is a community support and it could be done.
I mean, even if, and I don't know if it's possible, I know that Port, or Cuyahoga County, if you go to the airport, they have taxi services run out of Cleveland Airport. That is completely controlled, it's a little communist world, they set the rates, the guys gotta buy their own cars, they gotta pay for their own expenses and yet the, the county of Cuyahoga. Tells them how they run. They have, they're allowed to go from the airport, they're not allowed to provide taxi service.
The county or the city?
The county, the port authority, they're under the port authority.
Okay.
And so under the port authority and, which we could do, in Jogger County, we could say, the port authority. Um, they, they dictate to them, I would never wanna do what they're doing and follow that little communist model that they've got in Cleveland. Uh, I've talked to a couple of the taxi drivers there and how difficult it is for them to make money under that. But you can learn, I mean, there are things we could theoretically do to, to Ralph's point. We could do a, an optional program whereby taxi drivers, so to speak, voluntarily submit for a background check. We could do a background check, there's a sheriff's department, police department, get fingerprints and so on and so forth. So that at least we recognize people who are above board, they're just trying to, you know, make a living, maybe it's like Uber, they've taken their own car and they wanna go and make a buck or two and, and show the people around, whatever. Uh, and then they, uh, comport, you know, comply with certain rules, regulations, which we provide some oversight and guidance on, not necessarily be specifically involved, but there's all, all kinds of spitballing a little bit, there's, I think there's some options and opportunities. Right now, the game that we play is purely, we get this grand dollar from ODOT, it is strictly controlled in how we use it. Um, it has, you know, limitations and so on and so forth, and our transit department just, you know, plays by those rules. And we've not asked the transit department, it's not the transit department's fault, but we've not really asked the transit department to go beyond that and look at. What can we do for the good of Jogger County in terms of transportation needs? I know when the Community Service Action Group that I, on the board, they have a fund now set up to buy people cars because transportation is. They deem to be, you know, one of the most important things to getting people out of their poverty situation. So I think that there's probably a need for transportation, whether government provides it or it's done privately, I think that's an ideological discussion they have. But, you know, I think there's some opportunities, there's, you know, spitballing and have a conversation about it, so.
Definitely.
And Mike has been great at that, Mike has been great at that, I did, I went over there, looked at your whole scheduling system as a logistics, having some logistics background, I was very interested in the, how you schedule and route. Your customers and all that kind of stuff. You know, it's a well-run operation and it's unfortunate because transportation handcuffs you guys.
There are restrictions on how we spend that money and use those vehicles.
Yeah.
That was a nice conversation, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, sorry for putting you on the spot there, but I just, you know, I know there's a, there's a big industry out there as far as transportation goes, all underground, so.
Yeah, yeah. There's a problem, you know, once you do it right, you do illegally, there's a lot of administrative overhead and that adds to the cost of the ride, that's what makes Uber so effective, there's still overheads. I'd be pretty quiet, but Uber is a cashless system.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how in, in technology, you, you use your cellphone to get your ride to put in, then someone responds that they're in this area. I've never used it, I've been told this, and then, I don't know whether your cellphone or your credit card or whatever gets billed. So now I'm not a hundred percent sure that, of the technology that's available to Amish people and some of the people who are. Less fortunate than others, that, you know, I don't wanna, they may not have credit rating, they may not have some of the technology available to them and so on, they may not, I'm not saying they don't.
There's a lot of Obama phones out there, so.
Well, okay, well, you don't wanna go there. Uh, I'm just saying that without that technology, then the Uber concept isn't gonna work because they don't handle cash. They don't, you know, and, and that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean it's not worth talking about, it just means that their current model doesn't fit here, it'd have to be modified in some, some, some direction.
I have a couple different technologies in place already.
Your credit square is actually pretty impressive when you go over there and you look at how everything is done and it's a, it's a well-run operation, unfortunately, hamstrung, but. The, you know, the Uber model is not perfect either from a security standpoint, because you don't know who's coming to pick you up, these are, these are freelancers and they could just as easily be the same guys.
Ralph said about some of the taxi operators.
That's right. And you look at a lot of the taxi operators for the Amish, I mean, I wouldn't get in one of those cars, I mean, they're rust buckets oftentimes and, you know, you get definite safety issues, there's no oversight.
But that's where the marketing comes into, we've got a staff that's drug-tested, that's background-checked, that's, that's, you know, that our equipment is, is, is maintained. We've got, you know, this, 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 all the positives of why you should support the operation of Jogger Transit, you know. And that, it just comes to a marketing standpoint, or we could build this thing, you know, and, and get it out there, part of our newsletter, you know, of, of, of doing this, working with, you know. Um, some of the senior centers, some of the, you know, perfect example, like the other night, they had a moon watch for the park, you know, thing over there with the supersized moon and all that. Being able to say, we're booking a trip, we're picking up here, we'll take you, take you there and we'll bring you back, you know, and whatever it is, I'm just saying, I mean, there's all kinds of options, I mean, they're rolling through my head of, of being able to reach out to the people to say, here's what we could do, you know. And, and, and so, so, you know, we, we can get that, you know, community-based. Transportation in place to be able to do different things, like Sheridan has that ICE Festival or whatever, they, you know, Brew Fest and somebody wants to, you know. Play it safe that they may have had just one or two too many and, and we basically take you home and, and safe, you know, and, and you're not a hindrance on the road. Just a, a lot of different things that we do or we could do that I, I just, you know. Yeah, I mean, we could talk for, you know.
I, I agree, we, we need to talk and there, there are things that can be done.
Yeah.
Find out what kind of local support for that kind of system.
Yeah, and I, I think too, it's just a matter of, of hitting the triggers to, to make people realize what, what, what we, what we have and, 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 and once the ball starts rolling, I think that. You know, it could turn into something really pretty strong, you know, and be an integral part of our county. You know, to strengthen a lot of these different communities is a huge, huge resource.
I agree and I appreciate hearing that kind of support and that kind of thought, idea.
Yeah. Let's try to schedule something sooner than later, you know, before, before the end of the year here, the way we can get some fresh ideas going forward or maybe some things to look at. Yeah, I'll reach out to you and I don't wanna keep Mike out of it as the director, so, you know, I just, maybe shouldn't have even, you know, brought this up today without him being here, but I just, it's just conversation that is healthy, so.
Watch the video.
Yeah. So he and I have had multiple conversations on the same, on the same topic, so I mean, we're, we're right in sync. You know, and I've talked to people who use the system, cause they're, you know, they're. Unfortunately, the way the system is, we, we need to reach out to John and Sarah and the Department of Transportation, get them to loosen up a little bit and help us to. With some of the rules that they've got, because the most common complaint that I hear is it takes too long to get from point A to point B and, you know, there's all these stops and, you know, there's. I, I think there's ways around all that, if we could just get the ODOT to work with us a little bit, so. And/or we just work outside of that, you know, we can set up a different system outside of what we're currently doing.
Do you have that outline?
We got the route base, we're not even talking route based, we've not even touched the route base system. And there, we could do both and there's a, there's advantages to doing one over the other, so. But anyway, thanks, Jack.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Jack, sorry for the time.
No, no problem.
We were talking about him while he wasn't here.
No problem at all.
Sorry about that, water resources. Sorry, it's always good to hear all those other departments, sorry.
Yeah. We're gonna have to drive your employees from.
There you go, get rid of some of the trucks out there. They could haul the equipment around.
Camper at each, just put a camera at each location and they're gonna live there.
Think of all the opportunities.
Yeah.
Okay, the first item on the list here for us is the, just our annual approval for me to sign off on paperwork for our private water systems that we operate. One is the post two for the sheriffs and then the other one is stock equipment down in Bangor. So it's just approving us to be able to sign off on stuff as it comes up. Okay?
Is that eight and nine?
Uh, that's just eight.
Just eight, okay. You, should we separate these?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute resolution sixteen dash one five three, authorizing the director of the Department of Water Resources, Gerald Morgan, to execute any and all instruments. And indemnify the Department of Water Resources pertaining to the bond posted to the Ohio Department of Health, be engaged private water systems. For the application for a private water system installers license to cover activities of the department's water treatments and distribution operations.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Rir?
Aye.
Ms. Flare?
Aye.
The next item is a change order on our Coilyne lift station project, some adjustments were made to the generator and the transfer switch, it's gonna result in a, a deduct of a little over twenty-six hundred dollars.
You got a question?
I would throw this in a list.
Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute change order one, decreasing the contract with Workman Industrial Services for changes to the generator and transfer switch for the Coilyne lift station. Replacement upgrades project in the amount of two thousand six hundred and three dollars and thirty-four cents.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Ms. Rir?
Aye.
Ms. Flare?
Aye. Aye.
Clarify something for me. The, I got a pretty, pretty nasty, uh, uh, call yesterday or the other day about something, there was a letter to the editor in either Maple Leaf or, uh, the Jogger Courier or one of those papers that it was like saying that we're dumping thousands of gallons of human waste and. It's, that's nasty.
That's the septic colors, there's apparently a parcel farm out in Burton Township, I think it is, that there might be.
Okay, cause I, I don't know anything about it.
It's approved through the Board of Health, my understanding, it's basically, it's a land application of the septic, the septic, septicage that's being pumped out of people's septic tanks when they have their septic tanks cleaned. And it's taken there to be land-applied.
Okay.
Um, we do have an out, we do have the, a, a septicage receiving station at our McFarland plant.
Right.
Currently, you know, that we take in, and I don't remember how much we take in a day, but currently, I think we have three septic hollers that have licenses with us. The biggest, by far the biggest one is, um, Stagroall, Stagroall thinking, I was looking at it, but they, they probably take up about ninety-five, probably about seventy-five percent of the capacity.
Right, but the whole thing there is just putting it in there and filtering it and it's being disposed of.
Are you familiar with where this stuff is? It's a, I'm, uh, there's a.
I'm not, I did see the, the, the letter to the editor, but I didn't.
I don't know who wrote, wrote it, I didn't see the letter, but since I've been here, which is three years, I've been called by a, a property owner. Butternut and Hale, I think it's Butternut and Hale, right in that area.
That was, that was the subject of the letter, was that, it was that area.
Okay, yeah, and there's a, there's a property dispute there, uh, and, and they've, I got a lot of discussion about it, I know the prosecutor did, I know the engineer's office has. And the answer comes back, much like a lot of people, well, once it's out of a certain area, it's a civil issue. It's not us, we can't deal with it. And the people, the complaintant, if you will, who I sympathize with. Thinks that someone else should take care of that rather than, it has to do with a diverted, they modified the grade on the land, if we're talking about the same one. And where there was drainage, it got diverted across this other person's property, which I thought was illegal as well, but once it's out of the right of way. It may be illegal, but it's not our jurisdiction, they have to get an attorney and go after the other prop, their neighbor.
Well, and it, it's hard for this, and I've talked to Bob Weisbeck in the Health Department on this, cause I've gotten calls on it, that the people that are writing editorials and doing this, this has been a common issue for them. Um, and I talked to Bob Weisbeck about it, he assures me, first of all, that it's being applied to an EPA permit, so the EPA is approved of it. The, the material has been processed, so it's, from his perspective, and I'm not an expert, have no expertise in this whatsoever, but it's about told by the County Health guy. Um, and by the way, the EPA, cause I'll talk, also talk to the EPA about it, um, it meets certain standards, it's no different from putting cow manure on a field, it's just a, a nutrient that they're applying to a field. It's, it's been mitigated and processed to the point where it removes any harmful stuff. And so they're just applying this amount of property as you would apply cow manure to get fertilizer and stuff out there. And so that's what I'm told by the County Health Department and so, you know, if, if somebody said that my next-door neighbor had human waste being dumped on the property and it was draining onto my property, I wouldn't like it either, probably, just cause. What that conjures up in your mind.
Yeah, I'm not sure that this is the same case that Ralph brought up in this letter.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't see that.
Unfortunately, we didn't.
Yeah, none of us, I, I just know there is a case like that in the county that has been there for a period of time and it has to, there's a dispute between. Property owners that, that were, used to run across.
But that's like a, that's a drainage issue, here we're talking about dumping out.
No, no, it's a drainage issue where the rain comes down and, and the stuff and runs across the ground. They diverted, in my understanding is they diverted the.
Where it was, yeah, I'm not that, I'm not that familiar with it, I just saw, based on it was off of Butternut and they talked about the, in the, in the article or the editorial, they talked about the Kent State property. That where they're looking to build the, the school and it's adjacent to that and. Again, I'm not, I'm not that familiar with it, but no, I just go out a little distance.
Any distance away, so a pretty fair poke away from that, if it's the same one and I can tell you.
But I thought that you meant some.
Off-camera, so.
Well, Hale and Butternut is up here, Kent and the Kent property is down here, right, adjacent.
As I said, I mean, I got a, you know, pretty nasty call regarding this and I'm totally in the dark on it, so I just figured it was something.
Gore. Okay, spelling.
But that would be, I mean, that, Bob Weisbeck would be the better.
If it's being done under the EPA permit and all that kind of stuff, you know, it's not, it's not our responsibility, other, we might take a personal involvement then, because we don't like it or whatever.
Well, as you said, I could sympathize with them completely, but it's much like we have a gentleman that comes in occasionally that wants something that is beyond our scope.
But this is, I mean, this is something too in general that I, I've had some conversations with Bob Weisbeck about too, because if the new septic rules going, you know, going to effect that everybody's septic tank needs to be pumped out every, you know, every three years and they're gonna keep track of it. There's gotta be someplace for that to go, we don't have, we don't have the capacity in our plants to take it all, so is there something in the long run, maybe we can do as water resources of working and developing a plant or something where we're just definitely processing all reserve. I mean, right now.
I'm kidding.
You know, our, our sludge that we have from our plant, we. You know, our, our sludge that we have from our plant, we sell, or not sell, but we have, give, give to a company called Quasar, that has a facility up in Collinwood, where they further process it and make energy out of it. So, they, and then, once they're, once they've processed it down, now they've processed it down so far, that it is, again, just like a regular fertilizer, and I believe they actually sell the fertilizer to out to, so it's, I mean, it's all through their process, but, that's where, you know, that's where we take it, but we don't have, we only have a certain amount, because we have to actually mix it with the, the sewage that's coming into our plant, to make it private, so it does, so it doesn't upset our plant and, and make our plant ineffective.
We don't de-water that stuff, right? I mean, I worked in, in plants, not for the plant, in the plant, like the Southernly Waste Water Treatment Plant and so on, where they actually take whatever the byproduct is and dry it.
Do you have a filter press? We have, we have a press where we de-water it, you know, it's not completely de-watered, it's not dried out.
Okay, yeah, this stuff is like dust when it comes out, and they use it for fertilizer.
Yeah, we don't go that far, that's what we, we, we give it, well, we have an arrangement with this Quasar that they take it, they actually, the benefit for us on that is, they actually take ownership of the sludge, so we're no longer responsible for it.
Yeah, there's no liability.
Whereas if we were to take it, and what we used to do was send it to landfill, and it'd be landfill, we were still ultimately responsible, if anything ever happened and they could, whoever said, well, this sludge came from Geogee County, we would be liable for it.
I'm sure the technology's changed, 'cause when I was in those facilities, it's twenty-five, thirty years ago, and that these great big cylindrical screen things, that they put it in, and they put heat and air through there, and they dried the product, and made something that was...
Doesn't that company also make brownies?
I, I don't know on that one.
Whoa.
Boy, that conversation was...
Yeah, okay, well, back to the agenda.
Thank you for taking us there, man.
Yeah.
We're talking a newer one.
All right, thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry, for touching, talking stuff with us.
Yeah.
What, talk about food again?
It's my life.
My life is good. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
In case you wanna see them, this is just a listing of the changes that were made to the policy manual.
That's the one you gave me this morning? Okay, that's fine, I got it.
There's anything in there you have questions about.
Okay, I was gonna say, it was two pages, but you're saving a page.
It's on the backside, yes. The, I've come for you today with the revised policy manual, it is the culmination of more than a year's worth of work, with other department heads, with attorneys, with CCAOs input through their manual, we tried to bring ours in line in many ways with what the CCAO manual says, always putting it through the filter of what's best for Geogee County. So, one of the things that we were advised to do was to pull the hiring guide out of the policy manual and make it a separate document, so that's in there. And then, of course, we have a little handbook that we give to new employees when they come, that's sort of like a cheat sheet of the important things they need to know, that also needed to be revised, so that's why you see three documents listed there, the policy manual, the hiring guide, and the handbook. They've all been updated, they've all been approved by Laura, and it's ready, it's done.
And, you know, Linda has the nickname she's had here for the ten-plus years she's been here, Betty Bulldozer. And it really takes, in a government environment, in a government environment, it takes someone with Linda's persistence and intelligence and ability to get things done, and, and worked with a lot of individual department directors, and in some cases elected officials and prosecutor's office. It's been a huge task, and I really wanna thank her for being passionate about it and giving it done. No one else could've done it like you, you know.
Well, it helps to be policy there, it's a new thing, so. Fisher's Office is requesting the board approve and adopt the revised Geogee County Personnel Policy Procedure Manual, the Guide to the Job Recruitment and Hiring Process Manual, and Geogee County Employee Handbook to be effective November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Rears?
Aye.
Mr. Slerin? Mr. Claypool?
I have some questions.
I was.
That was given to you a long time ago, I was saying.
I was told six weeks.
You just approved it, you approved it. It's done, no, it's done.
I will ask you following the session, really, I just wanna get some questions.
Okay, no, no problem, any questions, that's just fine.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Wow, kind of forbid you ask a question.
The timer questions is done.
You weren't that...
The murderer of six.
You weren't not that animated when I asked you earlier, just at eight o'clock this morning, you weren't that animated.
The whole mean bulldog.
Bulldozer, not bulldog.
Abby Kirby gave me that nickname, she used to be the Secretary of the Maintenance Department, she used to call me Betty Bulldozer. The second item has to do with the Loss Prevention Safety Committee, that was actually in the policy manual and was established in nineteen ninety-three by the Board of Commissioners for a specific purpose, which has been fulfilled. The reason we're addressing it now is because we took it out of the policy manual, because of an Attorney General opinion that addresses if you have committees, are they subject to the open records law, are there open meetings law, and under what circumstances, and what do they do that makes them? In a long discussion with Laura, we determined that what the Loss Prevention Safety Committee does, functionally, doesn't really meet that standard, but that because it's called a committee, it could be confusing. So we're gonna continue to meet quarterly, as we have always done, we're gonna continue to do the same things, which is to make sure everybody knows how to fill out their paperwork, and to talk about any things that we can do to help people be mindful about safety within the working conditions that we all work under in the county. But we're gonna call it the Safety Team, and because we removed it, and, but it was created by an act of the Commissioners, then we kinda have to abolish it by an act of the Commissioners. The Loss Prevention Safety Committee was a specific thing, they did a specific thing, it will, the Safety Team will do what we've been doing under that name, but there will be, you know, the abolishment of that committee that was created by the Commissioners in nineteen ninety-three.
Fisher's Office is requesting the board approve the abolishment of the Loss Prevention Safety Committee that was created by the Board on August thirty-first, nineteen ninety-three, as the specific purpose of the committee has been fulfilled.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Rears?
Aye.
Mr. Slerin? Mr. Claypool? Aye.
Thank you.
No questions on that one?
Thank you.
She beat you down.
The last one, because the Loss Prevention Safety Committee has been abolished, my job description, which had a mention of that in it, needs to be adjusted to reflect that. So I am no longer the Chairman of the Loss Prevention Safety Committee, because you just abolished it, that's all we changed, was we just took that out. But I will still run the Safety Team. Fisher's Office is requesting the board approve the revised job description for the position of Director of Administrative Services, number thirteen oh two, to be effective November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, to align with the updated Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rears?
Aye.
Mr. Slerin? Mr. Claypool?
Thank you, Betty. Thank you, Betty, don't...
And anytime you want to ask questions, Commissioner, of course, I'm available to answer them.
It's more of a teaser for me, so that, 'cause I know as the Bulldozer, you'll be in my office asking me, what were the questions of?
I will, actually.
I might forget, but you won't let me forget.
Mr. Rears?
Just read it.
Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve the request from Commissioner -elect, Lyndon, to cover the expenses associated with travel to the CCAO Winter Conference on December fourth through sixth, two thousand sixteen, pursuant to ORC three-two-five-point-two-oh-nine-oh-one-point-one-zero.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rears?
Aye.
Mr. Slerin? Mr. Claypool? And the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session to consider the compensation of the public.
Make that motion, second.
Mr. Rears?
Aye.
Mr. Slerin? Mr. Claypool?
The board is permission, Linda Braden and Jerry Morgan, myself. All right. Ten, nine...
I don't anticipate any action.
Ten oh two or something.
There it goes. Okay. Okay, we're back from the executive session at, I got ten ten, or eleven ten, yeah.
No action to take.
No action to take. I move to adjourn.
Wait a minute.
Oh, you what?
Well, this is just, Christie would like you to just please sign a copy for our records of the Eagle Scout, those we shipped from Alaska.
Okay, so this is not new action?